Congratulations. Good, good.
How's Todd?
Todd?
Haven't been now. We got messed up.
All set.
So she's going to be open starting in January or since when?
I could please call the city council meeting to order. And if you can have the salute to the flag led by Councilor Doyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording secretary Cheryl Hebert, and request that she call the roll.
Councilor Doyle?
Yeah.
Councilor Bowns?
Here.
Councilor Littman?
Present.
Councilor Baldock?
Here.
Councilor Behr?
Present.
Councilor Hamel?
Present.
We can't get unanimity on that.
No, well.
We'll always be one.
Always.
We'll carry on the tradition.
Okay, staff in attendance at the table here this evening is City Manager Scott Myers. Proclamations, councils, we don't have any acceptance of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to read them. If you find any errors or corrections that you'd like to make, or I didn't see anything. Oh, we'll accept them as written. Consent and action items. Request to approve temporary traffic order 2017-19, community blood drive at the Bellknap Mill on Thursday, December 28, 2017, between the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any questions? If you have none, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, so. Interviews, we don't have any of those. We have citizen comments on matters not on the agenda this evening. Don't see any. That's all set. Interviews, we don't have any interviews. Nominations, appointments and elections. We have Michael Delavacchia seeking appointment to an alternate position on the zoning board of adjustment for the three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020.
So move.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion.
You make a motion to?
To appoint Michael Delavecchia.
Do I have a second? Second by Eva?
Do we need to specify the term?
It did.
Three-year term expiring at the end of August 2020.
I missed it. Okay.
You've got the wrong agenda in front of you.
I always got something wrong in front of me, Harmon.
Well, you ought to get up to date. Okay. Change the Heritage Commission membership. Yes.
You just have to have a vote on that when you had a motion and a second, but you need to take a vote on that for the appointment.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Communications. Public hearing relative to authorization of City Manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the City in the amount of $9,985 for the conservation project Laconia City Council Historical Records Preservation from the Moose License Plate Conservation Grant. That's on page 20 of your document in here. Does anybody have any comments on that this time? If not, if I can get to page 20. All right.
If we're motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, we need a motion to go into the public hearing. Do I have that?
You can just open it.
Just open it?
Yep.
Okay, so if anybody has any questions out in the audience?
Seven oh five.
Don't see any. Close the public hearing.
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Could we maybe go back to commu-- what is it?
Eleven B.
Yep, eleven B. We have the change in the Heritage Commission membership, please.
Okay.
I'll make those motions if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. It's to change the Heritage Commission membership. There's two people that, one wishes to change to a regular member and one wishes, wants to change to an alternate. So I'll move to appoint Catherine Tokaz as an alternate member of the Heritage Commissions to fill the remaining, remainder of Jane Whitehead's position, which expires at the end of March 2018.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Raise your hand.
Okay, and also move to appoint Jane Whitehead as a regular member of the Heritage Commission to fill the remainder of Catherine Tokaz's position, which expires at the end of March 2020.
I'll second that.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're going back to the Moose License Plate Conservation Grant. That's all been taken care of. Presentations, there are none. Mayor's report. I just want to, I hope everybody had a merry Christmas, and now we're going to hopefully have a happy new year.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. Items will be discussed in need along with council. Okay. Page 20. No presentations, except we have one item that Brenda would like to speak to, but that's down the line here a little ways. Citizen comments, request for comments on current agenda items. Anybody out there that would like to speak to that? Don't see anybody that wants to do that. Okay. City Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. You've got in your agenda packet tonight the project update for the month of December. Seeing at this time of the year and the weather, we are buttoned up with all construction projects for this year. It doesn't mean there's not a lot of activity going on. We've actually held three meetings over the past two months for various projects to garner public input, and especially looking to focus on the street projects and some of the neighbors who have some firsthand knowledge of drainage issues, or curb cuts, sightlines, pedestrian issues, those types of things. So we've held a meeting on the Court Street Project, the reconstruction, which will be taking place this spring of 2018, as the weather allows. Just a week or so ago, we held a meeting on Union Avenue on the leg from Main Street up to Guilford Ave. That project is in the design phase and will most likely be looking to roll that out. Possibility starting a little bit of the project late in 2018 with a lion's share to be completed, starting in the spring of 19 is the most likely timetable at this point. We also had a public input session regarding the Riverwalk for the segment behind the Landmark Inn and going on that side of the river. So we certainly encourage people who were not able to make those meetings to still provide information for us, and they can reach out to Public Works or Parks Department and speak to folks there if they've got information. Our pavement consultant has wrapped up a draft report at this point, and our Public Works Director is running through that with him. We're looking to make a presentation on overall street conditions and processes going forward to get some input from the council. That'll take place for one of our February meetings, and that information then will tie into helping put together the budget and dollar amounts, and you'll get some good information there, you know, regarding condition of roads, dollar amount it would take now, and how many years, and what our real backlog of work, if you want to call it, is. The other portion of the Riverwalk project that will be constructed in the fall of next year, the Landmark segment, we're slated to have it engineered and go out to bid later on this winter for construction in the spring. The area adjacent to City Hall heading down towards the Pearly Canal in the back of Church Street will also go out to bid this spring, but that'll be slated for construction this fall in conjunction with the drawdown over the river, because we've got that retaining wall and some issues there going on. So that'll be the timeframe for that one to go on. Other than that, we continue to make good progress on the land use and zoning chapter of the master plan update. We're expecting that to be in a draft form very shortly and work through the public process during the early months of 2018 in order to adopt that. We had a meeting with DES the other day. I don't have any specifics on how that went, but that was dealing with the Weers Beach restoration, so we had a meeting that Kevin Dunlevy and other staff attended, and that was Thursday of last week. I know in conjunction with the conversation that we're having tonight regarding the COPS grant that we had talked about two weeks ago, Chief Canfield is here to talk a little bit about how he would look to utilize that position going forward, and if there, and take any questions now or at the end, but I've got Chief Canfield. If we'd like to bring him up to talk about the Police Department and the role of that grant position.
Sure.
Chief?
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking Councilor Behr for supporting this initiative, as well as the entire council, for supporting this position as an added position for the department. Cheryl, can you bring up that PowerPoint? So 2018, we're looking to do a five-year strategic plan for the department. We've had some preliminary discussions with staff of the department and how we're going to shape a lot of initiatives throughout the department. Part of it, we're looking at this heroin epidemic and what we've done over the last several years, including the initiation of the PEP program that we have that has proven to be successful, and the treatment of those recovering from heroin issues, as well as the addition of a detective, in our detective unit to do drug investigations. So as you know, New Hampshire is ranked number two in the nation, behind West Virginia, for the number of opioid-related deaths. Certainly, we're no stranger to that here in Laconia. New Hampshire is ranked number one for fentanyl-related deaths per capita. Most of these are due to fentanyl, incarfent, fentanyl issues. So currently, under our current approach, we have, it's a three-pronged approach, so we're looking at prevention, education, and treatment. We focus a lot on education, or prevention primarily, excuse me, as far as treatment goes, with Eric Adams's position in working with recovering addicts, as well as navigating recovery. So our newest initiative would be to use this position along the lines of prevention. We've talked about initiating a crime watch program, similar to that used to be here, the latest version of which is the Crime Stoppers, Crime Line. A lot of our drug investigations are initiated through anonymous tips, information that's obtained through patrol officers, and this is one venue to do that, as well as neighborhood watch programs. We're looking at creating direct liaison with community groups to develop further information, as well as target quality of life issues, particularly in the downtown area. I know recently we've seen issues in the parking garage, the library areas, and stuff like that, and this position would be used to target those specific areas. Another issue, another area that we'd be looking at for is education, which we've been working with the Laconia Middle School to develop a drug education program. This is an area that has not been focused on very heavily. We do do a DARE program in the fifth grade. However, the middle school is an area where these kids are being tempted and introduced to heavy drugs, so that's certainly one area that we're looking at focusing on. We've been working with the schools to develop a program along those lines, and then, of course, you know, further enforcement through mobile enforcement in the patrol officer capacity. So those are the areas that we'd be looking at using these positions for. Sir?
Yes. Yes, Congress. So can you outline specifically what the grant is providing and what we're providing with respect to the, what's the staffing? You said positions, is it position, positions?
This particular grant is applicable to one position.
One position, okay.
And Lieutenant Swett can speak to the specifics of the dollar amounts?
So I'd sort of clarify what the chief was talking about. This new person we hire isn't going to do all those things. This is to allow other staff who have experience and training to get into all those other endeavors. This COPS grant is a three-year grant. It pays up to 75% of the cost of hiring an entry-level officer with a cap of $125,000. So roughly 41/6 a year. That for us in Laconia, with the cost of health insurance, if we hire somebody that wants the low end, it's significantly higher percentages covered by the grant, as opposed to, you know, a family plan or something like that. So I don't know if that answered the question you had.
I guess just a clarification around, and maybe look to the manager. I know that we had put some money in contingency, the budget process, assuming we had a chance at this. Am I correct on that recollection?
Yeah, we have some money there, so I think in terms of percent of a salary and benefits, again, if someone comes in at the entry level, and let's say that we went middle of the road in the two-person health insurance plan for them, this grant's probably going to cover between 50 and 60% of their cost of salary and benefits each year for three years, which means we would be looking to cover, you know, another approximately, you know, $30,000 to $40,000 within the budget in order to fund this position for the three-year period.
And about what, since we're into the year here, I might slip halfway through. What are we anticipating for lead time to hire someone to get this rolling?
We just finished a hiring process. We have four people that are in backgrounds to fill our current positions. We're conducting one of, we're kind of venturing out. We used to participate in the Great Bay Test, which is the written test, which is where the process starts. It's only offered certain times of the year. The end of this month, we're doing our own process to do our own written test, so hopefully we could get that person into the April Academy. That's what the goal would be, would be to hire four of the April Academy.
So we'll have more than enough in the current contingency, plus some to carry forward into next year.
Yes, and this grant, we pay the folks while they're at the Academy, but I mean, so this grant would kick in when they're actually hired and onboard as an employee for us. But in, we could, if we didn't utilize that money during the remainder of this fiscal year, we could certainly carry it forward and, you know, be able to utilize it going forward.
I know the neighborhood watch thing is of particular interest to some of the feedback we've got in the master planning, land use chapter discussions about, you know, neighbor, certain spot areas, some of which you hit upon. How long, what's sort of the timing for that to come into play where people might see a difference in that program being stood up?
Well, certainly, we'd be looking to do something towards the end of the summer. We would have to get these four new hires, assuming that they all form, work out, and they don't get stolen from us, or they make it through training. We would be looking at it sometimes towards the end of the summer to stand something like that up.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilor Hamel. Will those four people you're talking about, will that bring you to full staff?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one, which is a certified New Hampshire police officer, which is a reduced training period, so he doesn't have to go to the Academy. One of which is completely uncertified. The other two are part-time certified. So they would have to go to the Academy, so the goal would be to have the three of them in the Academy for April.
So you were down six at one time, so that would bring you to full, you've hired six?
We're down four.
Down four now?
We, yeah, we've been down four. I don't think we were ever down to six.
Okay. If you take, this person would obviously be a patrolman, and then you said you'd be taking people out to do what, that grant, or what you want to do with the drug enforcement type thing. So who would you be taking off the road to do that?
It would certainly be a selection process from within, and someone, a more senior officer would have the opportunity to participate in that.
Okay. Further questions? Yeah, I got one more. Is, can this, the rest of the person's salary, can that be funded within your budget now?
If you're down four, you should.
Because you're down, you're down quite a bit, so you must have saved quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
In labor over this time you've been down four, which is quite a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't off the top of my head, but I would certainly assume so. I know we've covered some shifts with overtime, being down four positions, but we can certainly look to do that.
Okay, so you think possibly you could?
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you. Councilor Littman?
Can I ask the manager a couple of questions?
Sure.
I know it's about two weeks or more ago, we talked about the public having an opportunity to advance pay some property taxes. Have we had anybody take advantage of that yet?
I think we've had a few people have come in. I don't think, you know, they're crashing the door, so to speak, but yes, some people are coming in as the details of the, of the federal bill on income taxes come to light, and people are doing their own scenarios and taking a look at it. So it's certainly gotten some play in the, in the newspaper as well, with some other communities getting a call. I know there's one city who does not have it on their books at this time, and I think late last week, there was a request of one of their counselors to hold a special meeting somewhere, meaning today, tomorrow. I don't know if it happened or not, but in order to get the city council to adopt that enabling legislation and give people till the end of the week to prepay taxes. So it's definitely drawn some interest, and we have seen some here, but.
In one of the news accounts, one of the municipalities that allowed for it, the, had a restriction that the monies that are collected for a future year are sort of put in reserve. Is that also the way we handle it here?
Yeah, I think Donna and I will be looking at that to make sure that we book it in the, we can book it now, but is it receivable for a future year, so it doesn't impact our cash flow?
The main benefit is being able to collect some additional interest expense on our property.
Yeah, we'd get some small benefit to it on it, and again, there's, if for some reason it was abated, or had to be refunded, or the property sold, there's no interest going back to the person who would advance pay, if you will, type of thing.
If you have a question now.
No, I was just going to go back to the Riverwalk programs that'll be coming up in the spring. Those are already funded, are they not?
Yes, those are already funded.
A few years ago, we funded the two.
Yeah, we've done some small segments that we've done over on the Beacon West Side, where the Allen Rogers Project was, that stairway down to the Riverwalk there, in conjunction with the redevelopment of the property across the river here. We've completed that section to it. We had to work on some easements with property owners on the other side of the river behind the Landmark, so that's what was holding us up. And the piece over the canal is going to necessitate a bridge and a little bit more engineering, just because you're going over the canal at that point. So that way, that, that's why those two segments have taken a touch longer, but they're in the queue for spring and fall of the next construction, of the next year.
On road presentation that's coming from, based on the consultant's work, one of the things also interested in hearing in that presentation, when you do do it, not for this evening, is some sense of what our capacity is for, you know, even if we, if we tripled what we were going to spend on roads, we have a limited capacity to manage so many projects simultaneously. It's sort of like, what's the need versus what do we have, the resources to project manage, and also to provide some quality of life in the community with respect to getting around?
Sure, and we can, and we can give you that, and again, I think it's also going to break down some roads that are major reconstruct. Obviously, the impact is far greater and for a far longer period of time versus going in and doing some quicker, you know, shim and overlay type of things. You can get in and out of there relatively quickly with minimal impact. So we'll continue to look to do a blend of that, but we will certainly talk about our capacity for, you know, how many projects of varying sizes, if you will, we can handle within a construction season.
Did we close on the financing that was approved at?
We did. We closed on that shortly after the council approved it, and I know Northway Bank was very excited to be the low bidder, if you will, and get those funds, and there's been a little change of people in a couple of banks in the area, so there's definitely some new interest that's been rekindled in people who are interested in having their banks be more players with when we go out to bid on things, so that's good for the city.
Also, I think our timing of the bid was pretty good with respect to the interest rate environment.
Yes, I think locking in those rates towards the latter part of November, just before the Fed made its move, worked out well for us.
Yes, Councilor. Scott, I want to bring up my pet peeve again. Highland Street. This is the third year now that's gone by, and I've kind of been told that something would be done up there with the infrared and fixing those seams there, and another year's gone by. That road was paved in 2011, and 2013, they had a pretty good-sized blowout from a water pipe disconnecting from a culvert, not a culvert, but a structure, because it wasn't fastened properly, and then they had another one down the road a little further, and they fixed eight, that I can remember, structures that were sinking or not put in properly, and there's, they're still sinking, some of them, and there's still, there's two more that are still sinking. And I spoke to Representative of Busby and said that that would be done, and I mentioned it to West about that also, and another year's gone by, and it's still not done.
I know we've done, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I know we've done some work there, but let me get you a status update. I don't have any specific information on that tonight, but.
Yeah, well, there hasn't been any work done up there. So I just want to bring it up again. Hopefully, next summer, they might get to it, but I'll be around for another two years, so I'm not going to let it go.
We will get you an update report on that.
Anyone else?
Two, actually, two other quick items. One is our meeting in January, the first meeting is over at the Bellknap Mill, so we'll get some information onto that, but this is a little bit more of a ceremonial meeting, and just the bare minimum as far as any items that we need to act on for a business meeting portion of that. And then January 22, we have the auditors coming in to present the prior fiscal year audit for us, so we've got it in draft form right now. We're going through that, Donna and I and staff, so we'll, once that's finalized, we will certainly get you a copy of that in advance of the audits. You've got a chance to, to read it and come prepared with questions or thoughts on that, so, but that'll be January 22.
Yes, Councilor. Just one more quick thing. I'd like to thank Public Works for their really great job of clearing our streets over the last two storms, especially being out there all day Christmas and at there. They did a super job of, was almost backed down a bare pavement within a day, so they really did a good job, and I appreciate what they did.
Thank you. They did a great job.
Councilor Littman? County budget and Councilor Behr and I, Councilor Behr attended, I think, the full meeting. I had to leave a little bit early.
Oh, you didn't miss much.
In terms of trying to maybe have a one-off meeting with the administration there to talk about maybe some approaches to provide some relief to the increase that's been talked about, I guess I'd like to explore with the appropriate folks there in terms of whether there are some financing strategies that work to maybe minimize what's being paid in interest, but I think in terms of how that debt is being organized or not, putting more pressure on current than, than I think is maybe worth when you consider the impact on, you know, potentially 100% of the amount to be raised by taxes being consumed by the county increase, and understanding that they do have to do something different because of where they're at.
If you take, this person would obviously be a patrolman and then you said you'd be taking people out to do what, that grant or what you want to do with the drug enforcement type thing. So who would you be taking off the road to do that?
It would certainly be a selection process from within and someone, a more senior officer would have the opportunity to participate in that.
Okay. Further questions?
Yeah, I got one more. Can this, the rest of the person's salary, can that be funded within your budget now?
If you're down four, you should.
Because you're down, you're down quite a bit, so you must have saved quite a bit of money in labor over this time you've been down four, which is quite a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't off the top of my head, but I would certainly assume so. I know we've covered some shifts with overtime being down for positions, but we can certainly look to do that.
Okay, so you think possibly you could?
Yes.
Further questions? Thank you.
Counselor Lutman?
Can I ask the manager a couple of questions? I know it's about two weeks or more ago, we talked about the public having an opportunity to advance pay some property taxes. Have we had anybody take advantage of that yet?
I think we've had a few people have come in. I don't think, you know, they're crashing the door, so to speak, but yes, some people are coming in as the details of the, of the federal bill on income taxes come to light and people are doing their own scenarios and taking a look at it. So it's certainly gotten some play in the, in the newspaper as well with some other communities getting a call. I know there's one city who does not have it on their books at this time, and I think late last week, there was a request of one of their counselors to hold a special meeting somewhere, meaning today, tomorrow. I don't know if it happened or not, but in order to get the city council to adopt that enabling legislation and give people till the end of the week to prepay taxes. So it's definitely drawn some interest and we have seen some here, but.
In one of the news accounts, one of the municipalities that allowed for it, the, had a restriction that the monies that are collected for a future year are sort of put in reserve. Is that also the way we handle it here?
Yeah, I think Donna and I will be looking at that to make sure that we book it in the, we can book it now, but is it receivable for a future year so it doesn't impact our cash flow?
The main benefit is being able to collect some additional interest expense on our property.
Yeah, we'd get some small benefit to it on it. And again, there's, if for some reason it was abated or had to be refunded or the property sold, there's no interest going back to the person who would advance pay, if you will, type of thing.
If you have a question now?
No, it's just going to go back to the Riverwalk programs that'll be coming up in the spring. Those are already funded, are they not?
Yes, those are already funded.
A few years ago, we funded the two.
Yeah, we've done some small segments that we've done over on the Beacon West side where the Allen Rogers project was, that stairway down to the Riverwalk there in conjunction with the redevelopment of the property across the river here. We've completed that section to it. We had to work on some easements with property owners on the other side of the river behind the landmark. So that's what was holding us up in the, the piece over the canal is going to necessitate a bridge and a little bit more engineering just because you're going over the canal at that point. So that way, that, that's why those two segments have taken a touch longer, but they're in the queue for spring and fall of the next construction, of the next year.
On road presentation that's coming from, based on the consultant's work, one of the things also interested in hearing in that presentation when you do do it, not for this evening, is some sense of what our capacity is for, you know, even if we, if we tripled what we were going to spend on roads, we have a limited capacity to manage so many projects simultaneously. It's sort of like, what's the need versus what do we have the resources to project manage and, and also to provide some quality of life in the community with respect to getting around?
Sure, and we can, and we can give you that. And again, I think it's also going to break down some roads that are major reconstruct. Obviously, the impact is far greater and for a far longer period of time versus going in and doing some quicker, you know, shim and overlay type of things. You can get in and out of there relatively quickly with minimal impact. So we'll continue to look to do a blend of that, but we will certainly talk about our capacity for, you know, how many projects of varying sizes, if you will, we can handle within a construction season.
Did we close on the financing that was approved at?
We did. We closed on that shortly after the council approved it, and I know Northway Bank was very excited to be the, the low bidder, if you will, and get those funds. And there's been a little change of people in a couple of banks in the area, so there's definitely some new interest that's been rekindled in, in people who are interested in having their banks be more players with when we go out to bid on things. So that's good for the city.
Also, I think our timing of the bid was pretty good with respect to the interest rate environment.
Yes, I think locking in those rates towards the latter part of November, just before the Fed made its move, worked out well for us.
Yes, Counselor. Scott, I want to bring up my pet peeve again, Highland Street. This is the third year now that's gone by, and I've kind of been told that something would be done up there with the infrared and fixing those seams there, and another year's gone by. That road was paved in 2011, and 2013, they had a pretty good sized blowout from a water pipe disconnecting from a culvert, not a culvert, but a structure, because it wasn't fastened properly. And then they had another one down the road a little further, and they fixed eight that I can remember, structures that were sinking or not put in properly. And there's, they're still sinking, some of them, and there's still, there's two more that are still sinking. And I spoke to representative of Busby and said that that would be done, and I mentioned it to West about that also. And another year's gone by and it's still not done.
I know we've done, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I know we've done some work there, but let me get you a status update. I don't have any specific information on that tonight.
Yeah, well, there hasn't been any work done up there. So I just want to bring it up again. Hopefully, next summer, they might get to it. But I'll be around for another two years, so I'm not going to let it go.
We will get you an update report on that.
Anyone else?
Two, actually, two other quick items. One is our, our meeting in January, the first meeting is over at the Belknap Mill. So we'll get some information on that, but this is a little bit more of a ceremonial meeting and just the bare minimum as far as any items that we need to act on for a business meeting portion of that. And then January 22nd, we have the auditors coming in to present the prior fiscal year audit for us. So we've got it in draft form right now. We're going through that, Donna and I and staff. So we'll, once that's finalized, we will certainly get you a copy of that in advance of the audits. You've got a chance to, to read it and come prepared with questions or thoughts on that. So, but that'll be January 22nd.
Yes, Counselor.
Just one more quick thing. I'd like to thank Public Works for their really great job of clearing our streets over the last two storms, especially being out there all day Christmas and at there. They did a super job of, was almost backed down a bare pavement within a day, so they really did a good job and I appreciate what they did.
Thank you. They did a great job.
Counselor Lutman?
County budget and Counselor Bear and I, Counselor Bear attended, I think, the full meeting. I had to leave a little bit early.
Oh, you didn't miss much.
In terms of trying to maybe have a one-off meeting with the administration there to talk about maybe some approaches to provide some relief to the, the increase that's been talked about, I guess I'd like to, to explore with the appropriate folks there in terms of whether there's some financing strategies that work to maybe minimize what's being paid in interest, but I think in terms of how that debt is being organized or not, putting more pressure on current than, than I think is maybe worth when you consider the impact on, you know, potentially 100% of the amount to be raised by taxes being consumed by the county increase and understanding that they do have to do something different because of where they're at, but are there some ways to, to work that through? My understanding is that their bond rating is still pretty strong despite the challenges, which is a positive, but I think I'd like us to, before it's a fait accompli, to maybe have some discussions at administrative, informal level to maybe pass some ideas back and forth.
You're talking, I'm just trying to clarify something between me and maybe the county administrator and just have a general conversation to.
Maybe introduce some ideas that, you know, it's, it's theirs to govern, but I think, you know, as a constituent, if you will, to the county, have some interest in terms of how it all works out.
I can do that. I will tread carefully, just respecting the different delegations that oversee the various budgets. Obviously, you've got the commissioners who present and the delegation who approves. I will say that Representative Hewitt and Representative St. Clair did try to coordinate something with the Laconia reps, but we didn't get the full contingent, but both of the two names I just mentioned did come in and sit with me a little bit a couple of weeks ago in advance of this to try to get some background, and that certainly was appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are different philosophies to, to debt. I think, you know, one of the things I think's worked pretty well for the city of Laconia and staying within the tax gap has been, you know, sort of the perspective that some major investments, that if you have too short of amortization, you're basically putting all the pressure on current people and, you know, by stretching some of our projects out to, you know, within legal limits of, of matching life and, and amortization schedules that the burden's shared by people who come in at a later point. Otherwise, the current people are paying for the entire improvement and others who come in later don't, don't pay the same fair share. So I guess, you know, if things were different and we weren't talking about a potential county amount that would consume the entire plus, as I understand the calculations today, that would be true, correct?
It would consume the entire city-county portion as a standalone, and we've always, at least in my time and looking back prior to that, that if the county, you know, came in under, the city had the opportunity to use a little bit of extra space, and if the county came in over, the city would have to absorb it. The schools on their side, the same thing with the state education part and the amount, you know, coming from the state and revenue, that if there was a shortfall there, the schools needed to accept it. So yes, based on what the county and city portion would be for the tax cap was being proposed right now, would, would far exceed that.
So my understanding, it's, if the increase is four million, our share would be roughly 800,000?
Yeah, we're, we're a little under 20%, but for round numbers, yes, it'd be about an $800,000.
And last year, the amount that we had to spend on the, on those two pieces that you mentioned was how much?
I think off the top of my head, I want to say it was somewhere between 400 and 450,000 was the total city and county amount. We're a little bit higher on CPI, and I think we're going to come in a couple of million higher on construction value, but I think that still probably brings the total figure maybe to the half million dollar or a little bit higher. I think I calculated it a few weeks ago, but I haven't looked at it since then, but, so there's a little bit more room there, but certainly not enough to absorb 800,000. If that were to be the case, as it stands today, we would absorb that and we would have to find several hundred thousand dollars of reductions on the city side in order to present a budget that stays under the tax cap. That would be significant.
Yeah, and I want to say, I think the things that have been implemented are things that have been needed to be done. I guess it's just, you know, whether there's some other ways to, to structure them, to take a little of the.
I can certainly broach conversation in an informal way and I'm happy to do that.
Did, did anything productive come out of, I'll call it, the meeting that Representatives Hewitt and St. Clair tried to pull together?
Well, they were looking, I think, to bring the delegation in and meet with me to try to get a sense of the impact to the city and what we were looking at for allowable increases in the tax cap so that they always had a sense to it. Representative Tilton in the past has always come to me in sometime in January. I think the budget process seems to be accelerated a little bit more on the county end this year than in past years. In past years, I, I believe they started taking it up in January. This year, it's, it's up about a month on that. But Representative Tilton was always good to come in and, and say, okay, what does this mean in terms of real dollars and kind of correlate that to what could the county pass along as an increase and not exceed, you know, the portion of the Laconia tax cap. So while we did not have the full delegation, the full four members there, we did have two members there who I think have a good sense and certainly their time was appreciated.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions?
On that topic, I guess the, I'll let it go at this point.
Okay. New business, City of Laconia, Belknap, PDC, 609 Main Street LLC, loan extension request. So you have on page 24, the extension request for PDF, Belknap, EDC memo, PDF on page 25. So I have a motion on that proposal.
I'll move to approve the loan extension request for the current promissory note between the City of Laconia and 609 Main Street LLC to March 20, March 31st of 2018.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bams. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Now, the next item we have on the agenda here is the City Manager's Valuation Compensation Review Council.
Yes, thank you. I had an email this morning from Mayor Engler, and before I bring up the motion, he'll be back in Laconia on January 3rd, if all goes well. So I just want to make a motion to increase the salary of the city manager for calendar year 2018 from its present level of $125,000 to $130,000.
Yes.
I'll second it.
I'll just explain a little bit about it. It's the fact that this increase is a 4% increase. However, two of that, 2% of that number would be a recognition that he received no salary hike in 2017. The council considers the other 2% as COLA for 2018 and also a recognition of his excellent job performance. And I would just like to add that, before I leave, I want to say how grateful I am for City Manager Myers' work. When he came before the city council six years ago, I was the only consular to vote against him. And it was the only time I was wrong. But I very quickly came to realize that he was absolutely the best person we could have got. Our city is in good financial shape. The morale of the city employees is, is excellent. The people he's appointed to top spots have been excellent. And not only that, he's a man that's available to everybody, whether we're consellers or somebody off the street. He's always there, and for some unknown reason, he always has the answer. He's really top-notch and I approve. I will be voting for this hike and thank him for the six years I've had him.
Thank you very much. Those are very heartfelt comments and I appreciate them. Thank you.
I think that's a feeling around the table. I believe everybody is in that same position. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
I second it.
Seconded?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I enjoy my time working with all of you and my time in the city and look forward to many more years.
Great. Okay, unfinished business. Page 26, authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $9,985 for the conservation project, Laconia City Council Historical Records Preservation from the Moose License Plate Conservation Grant. So we have, we have a motion to move and approve the authorization to allow the city manager to accept and expend a grant on behalf of the city in the amount of $9,985 for the conservation project, Laconia City Council Historical Records Preservation from the Moose License Plate Conservation Grant.
Seconded.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Doyle, and you seconded it. Counselor Bear, have any further comments? And then all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, on page 26. Page 27 is just the.
Before we leave this item, I'd like to just throw out for something for the council for future agenda item consideration. We, we, at one point, took the position with respect to how we processed a lot of these grants and the amount of time that we're taking up on council agenda on relatively small items. I think it's, in the, the next year, I'd like to see us revisit our policies in and around some of this stuff. I think if others feel that, we probably could develop some criteria or something to, to, to consider.
I think that's one of the items we have under unfinished business on the.
Government. If there was a reason that we couldn't.
Yeah, we have to do adopting, there was a question of whether it needs to be a ballot question to amend the charter or whether adopting 3195, and we can get clarification from the AG's office on that.
Yeah, I'd like to see us do that.
Happy to do that.
One way or the other, to, to do both if we have to.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further? All right. We did, we did vote for that, Moose.
You're on item 21.
Yeah, 21, resolution 2018-01, relative to New Hampshire RSA 72:82, a statewide property tax exemption for industrial construction, on page 28. And there are a couple of motions that have to be, well.
So I think we had proposed to have a public hearing, is that not?
Yeah, so what we did was we took your consensus last time and we targeted, we structured the language to identify the industrial use as opposed to commercial as well, in a five-year period and a 50% reduction on the local portion of the tax. And we've got that into a first reading tonight, so I think the three motions are on the bottom of page 28 to do by title only and move this to the public hearing. And rather than tie this up with your organizational meeting on January 8th, we will refer this to the January 22nd meeting. So you have three motions on the bottom of page 28.
Counselor Ham.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I move to waive a reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only.
I'll second. You made that motion, I'll second it.
Any further questions? All in favor? Aye? Raise your hand. Okay, next.
I move to waive the first reading of Resolution RES-2018-01, a resolution relative to New Hampshire RSA 72:82, a statewide property tax exemption for industrial construction.
Seconded.
Second by Counselor Bear. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
And I move to schedule a public hearing on January 22nd, 2018, during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to adoption.
Seconded by Counselor. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Yes, we're at council comments.
Do you want to take up Mr. DeValkia's?
What's that?
Mr. DeValkia, did we finish, did we finish voting on him? I just want to make sure.
Yes, he was voted as the alternate to the ZBA, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any further comments from the council? None?
I do.
Counselor Ham.
I know we're going to have a ceremonial meeting, next meeting for the new council coming in and the old council going out, but I want to say what a, what a pleasure it's been to serve with Brenda on the city council. We've had our little back and forths, but it's always, always been in the good, for the good of the city and, and our wards that we represent, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I would, I would say the same. I think we, we've had an excellent council here for quite a few years, and we did a lot of, a lot of work and made a lot of good, good motions, and we passed them, so I think this council has done an excellent job, Counselor.
I would add that and also like to say, I'm going, it's going to be with regrets that we won't have Counselor Doyle at the table as well. And, you know, I think both women have provided some good input and leadership on their respective committees. I know in terms of our non-public sessions and in terms of leading some different initiatives that were challenging ones to work through, like our rules, you did a phenomenal amount of work on that and I think represented your ward as well as the city as a whole, and I think we've been fortunate to have both of you, and I think we're going to miss a woman's touch on the, on the council in terms of the perspective that you've brought on a number of different issues. And I hope that you'll make sure to express your opinions to us so we can carry forward with that, those ideas, but I second Counselor Ham's comments that we've accomplished a lot and that you've been very important to making those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My comments were for the both of you. I appreciate everything you did too, Ava.
I make a comment in reply. I was going to send it to the paper, but I'm going to read it. You have to put up with me one more time.
Half an hour.
No, I timed it. I've been pounding for some time now on how I wanted to say goodbye and what it has meant for me to serve as a city consular for the past 12 years. Imagine a 79-year-old widow spending time golfing and watching TV. What a waste. Someone not particularly skilled in the new technological world, doing arts and crafts and writing occasional letters to the editor. I decided just prior to turning 79 to go to the library and take their free lessons on using the computer. This would make it easier for me to communicate with my children and find out stuff on the internet. It also meant I would be writing more letters to the editor criticizing current policies and taking different consulars to task. If you're going to criticize government, then you should be doing something about it. I did. I ran for city council, lost the first time, and then ran again and won, and have been on the council since for 12 years. I still wrote letters to the editor so everyone knew where I stood or explained some of the different matters that were before us, as I believe everyone should be informed and involved in their city government. Only 20% of the registered. Only 20% of the registered voters in Laconia took part in our recent local election. At the presidential election a year ago, the turnout for Laconia was 70%. And New Hampshire had the third-largest turnout per capita in the country. Our vote in the presidential election doesn't change or influence what decisions are made. But here at home, everything the city government does affects us in every way. Taxes, roads, schools, fire, police protection, our beaches and our parks, yet not enough care to vote or get involved. You should believe in our city enough to do something. Vote. Volunteer for committees that are available. Run for office. No one had less experience in government than I. Never feel you are not qualified. It truly takes every different person to make it work. Age is not a problem. Retired people have the time to spend on many matters. They have a lifetime of experience. We need financial people, lawyers, business owners, and mostly just people who want to do good. My point is, get involved in your city. You will love it and find it most worthwhile. These past 12 years have been the happiest and most satisfying years of my life. In conclusion, I went into it blind, thinking I was going to change everything. When you get there, you find out how much is involved and how much you don't know. And your thinking changes slowly as you learn the ins and outs of all departments and facets of the city. I came to know and love all my fellow consellers. Even when I would oppose them and they me, we were always comrades. It also takes the help of the entire personnel of the city. They are the most valuable resource a consular can have and they give of their time willingly and can give you the facts needed to make the right decision or help you understand a subject. I am indebted to every department for the years of advice and information needed. Thank you all, Happy New Year.
They're surely going to miss you, that's for sure.
Well, be careful, you might get more than you think.
Well, Ava.
I get to go last, I guess.
I guess so, move to agenda?
No.
No.
No. I'll probably get a chance to say this again on January 8th, but just in case I don't. For four years, I've been the rookie on this council. And both counselors from Ward 1 and Ward 4 have been a chore and a delight. And I'm going to miss you both. Best of luck, all the best. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not?
You're done?
We're done.
All right.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Yes, right.
You don't have to vote on the journey anymore, you just get out and walk out.
You're the boss.
Meeting's done.
See you all in January anyway.